Good evening, everyone. I am calling this regular city council meeting to order Tuesday, October 14, 2025. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. Tonight, our invocation will be led by Councilwoman Scott, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Singletary. Can we all please stand?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you there, God, for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We pray to Heavenly Father that you watch over us one by one, watch over our community. Lord, we are in grieving today, Lord. We've lost some sense of life. We pray to Heavenly Father that you be with the family everywhere. Bless this city, Lord. Bless each and every electorate official, everyone in the United States. We pray, Lord, for peace. We pray to Heavenly Father that you will give us strength to make the right decision. Give us an open mind, Lord. We don't know what may go on, but we know that you are in charge. We trust you, and we pray to Heavenly Father that things will go well today. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilwoman Scott, for the invocation. Thank you, Councilwoman Singletary, for the pledge. Madam Clerk, can you please poll our city council members?
Mayor Annika Robinson?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Veronica Cooper?
Present.
Councilmember Melissa Scott?
Present.
Councilmember Melissa Askin?
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Fleming Crosby?
Present.
Councilmembers, the polls Singletary?
Present.
Councilmember Jason Brown?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Has been properly moved as second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes, minutes from regular council meeting on September 9, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Has been properly moved as second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Next, we have our presentations. We have two separate presentations presented by the same person. Pastor Paula Morris will be presenting for Ronnie McNair Committee for Ronnie McNair 5K Walk and Run, and she will also present from Lake City Community Organization. Pastor Morris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse me. Okay. First, I'm going to give you the report from Ronnie McNair Committee. This year, we will be celebrating and acknowledging Dr. Ronnie McNair's 75th birthday. On this Saturday, beginning at 8:00 a.m., we will have our annual 5K Run Walk, the Dr. Ronnie McNair 5K Run Walk. If you have not registered yet, you can go to runsignup.com to register. That's R-U-N, S-I-G-N, up, dot com, dot com to register. We pray that everyone in this room would register and be out there running the streets with us, walking the street with us, and trying to win that trophy in your age group. We also will have a health fair, which will begin at 8:00 in the attachment of the library with several screenings going on from Hope Health, Francis Mary University. Their nursing students will be there. We will have cholesterol tests, diabetes, blood pressure checks, and this is coming from a cloud screening. Our ambassador is Dr. Tyrone Wallace, and we will have a step performance by The Omega, and the car that he rode in during the 1984 parade will be on display to take pictures only with. And inside the McNair Center, you will have viewing of the film From the Moon. SCETV will be here filming, going around the city with us with the walk, and then we're going to have yoga, yoga at the 5K, and much, much more. So I pray that everybody in this room will come out this Saturday. As Mr. James Montgomery would say, "Don't meet us there, but beat us there," okay? So let us celebrate our hometown hero, Dr. Ronnie McNair. Okay, that take care of 5K. And the day I stand before you, to the mayor and city council, first I want to say to you is that I apologize for the way that I came and interrupt your meeting, but I don't apologize for what I said because I know that it needed to be said. But I apologize at the last meeting how I was out of order, how I came and said, okay? So I ask your apologies there. And I want to say, in Lake City, I know right now that we are going through some things in Lake City, the budget, and you know, that's our main, how can I say, subject that we are doing now, but Lake City is still doing some great things. And I know that we are focusing on the bad things, you know? I know, excuse me, news media, I know that's why y'all are here, because it's not a good thing, it's the bad thing. But what we want you to know here in Lake City, come and visit us when Ronnie McNair, that's a good thing. Come and visit us when we have our prayer walk, our prayer time at Lake City High School at Sunday, and we didn't have this many people could show it up, but we are doing some good things. Visit early, Lake City Early Childhood and see what Mr. Jamie Daniels is doing with our 5K through 3rd grade, making sure he got tutors that teaching our children to make sure that they can learn before they get to the 3rd grade. We have some great things going on in Lake City, and I would like to see the news media come when we are doing the great things and not only when they think that Lake City is out of here. The Lord that I serve tell me that he will take the good and turn around for the, take the bad and turn it around for good for those who love the Lord. So I stand on the promise of God today to say that, yes, we are going through, but listen at me, mayor and council, listen at me, all of you. When the Israelites went through in the wilderness, when there was any bondage, God allowed that to show them their heart. God already knew their heart, but they had to find out where their heart was. So what we are going through now is God is showing us our heart. The way we are taking the things that we are going through, the city is divided. We, some is on this side and some is on that side, but it's time for us to come together to try to find a solution here in the city. That's what God want to do. So if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem, and it's time for us to get it right here in the city. Deuteronomy 33:2, and I got two more minutes. "As days are, so shall your strength be." This is what Deuteronomy says to, "As days are, so shall your strength be." It is a promise that God will provide the strength needed to face each day's challenge, meaning you will have the necessary resource. Listen, Lake City is going to have the necessary resource for us to get back where we need to get to. We're going to have that because I believe in Hebrew 11, where it says that, "Faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen." So we are looking in the natural, and if you are a child of God, you should be looking, being kingdom minded. And it always goes on to say that whatever you are going through, whether it is a time of need or simple for daily duties, that God will give us the strength. God will give us the strength. We are more than conqueror in Christ Jesus if we stand together, y'all. Because together, we can do this. Divided, we will fall. We are not the only city that going through things, through financial, we are not the only city. We are not the only city, but right about now, we are in the media, we are in the news, and everybody's talking about Lake City. When I go and visit other places, they're saying, "What in the world is going on in Lake City?" I said, "Guess what? We're going to make it." I just ask you to pray for us. So as I stand as one of the leaders in this city, I stand on the promise of God that we can do all things through Christ who give us the strength. I stand on the promise of God that he will never leave us nor forsake us. I stand on the promise of God that he will bring us out, but I say to my city leaders, "Let's get it together." Where is your heart tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Paula Morris, for your presentations on tonight. We really do appreciate, appreciate both presentations. Next, we have our public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no, no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns. However, speakers should not expect the council to take action or deliberate on subject matters raised during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address on record with the city clerk to counsel.
First, I'm going to start off by saying something good, and then I'll go into the rest. I want to thank Lake City Police Department because they did a great job. My sister's car was thrown out of her yard on Wednesday. It was on a Monday, and they recovered the car on Monday, so I want to thank Lake City Police for fast action and getting the car, investigating and recovering the car back, even though it was destroyed a lot when they did, discovered in Lake City. Also, I want to say, also that...
Can you state your name?
Oh, excuse me, Margaret Jones. And I also want to say, you know, due to a lot of the youth violence that is going on and all the murders and stuff that happened here in Lake City, it is very touching because the person that got killed yesterday was a family member of mine's. And I always try to encourage the community, reach out to the youth, have something for them to do. It's nothing in the community for Lake City youth to do. Okay, you got the YMCA, you got different places, but most parents cannot afford for their children to go to these places. So you have to have something where the children can go where it's not involving a fee, because nowadays, even just to get food for the children to eat because of the rising cost in the economy, parents cannot afford those different clubs for those children to go to. So there's nothing for our youth to do, Lake City. We got to look in saving our youth. That's our future. But down there, we do not have a future. We have to think about it. Yes, we going through a lot, like they say, but we have to focus on everything. We have to focus on getting Lake City's great, getting our youth's great, getting our budgets' great, it's a lot we have to focus on. You know, and, and the main thing is too, when you owe employees, sometimes you have to look at your employees. When you cutting jobs, I was a nursing director. When you cutting jobs, that affect their whole family. You got to look and say, "Okay, what can we do different? What can we do to save these people's job?" That should be number one, because you taking food off of their table, their income, a steady income they used to. You got to think about, how about that with you? A single parent, I read about that. I cried. I'm a single parent. I would be in tears if I lose my job, cannot afford to buy anything to eat for my family. That is heartbreaking, y'all. Y'all got to think about, when you go through these things and...
Your time.
My time is up.
Thank you.
Don't start yet, just sign my name. My name is Jane Player, and we are in a crisis, and we can either let this crisis crumble us or leverage it to come together and rise. Now, I know that I have the energy to help, and I think there are lots of people in Lake City, retired people partially like me, and even people who live on the outskirts of Lake City, who are willing to come together in a forum and generate some ideas of how we can generate some continued revenue for the city of Lake City to get us out of this There's a lot I can share with you. I love this city, everybody here does, that's why we're here. And I would like to, for the city council to think about having a community meeting and get some small groups together of people who are not serving the city, who have the energy and time, and help y'all come up with some ideas to get us out of this crisis that we're in. And I have a quote that I'd like to leave you with. "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I'm not going to be as long-winded as I was two weeks ago, I promise. I just have two questions. So looking over the budget, I see we have allocated for consultant fees, and I'm just wondering if we could potentially use those consulting fees instead of hiring consultants or contracting out for consultants if we cannot use the consulting fees and the administration budget and the finance budget in order to, instead of eliminating the two positions, one in finance and one in administration, in order to keep those two positions instead? That's all for tonight. Thank you so much.
Did you state your name?
Yes, Brittany Webb, and I work for the city of Lake City. I'm the human resources and payroll manager. Thank you.
How's it going, guys? Been, been a little while. I've been dealing with some stuff. My name's Terry Herring. I live on the outskirts of Lake City. More money's not going to be the solution. That's just part of the solution. If something's not changed, we're going to be right back here again. You know, I've not been here the last few meetings, but you hear things. I got a friend of mine who's got a business in town. You guys owe him a lot of money. He just wrote a check for a lot of money to pay his taxes. I mean, I understand waste management's got to be paid, but the local businesses just been here for you guys, just provided the money, just helped keep the lights on. When you needed them, they've been there for you. We got to find a way to get them paid. We don't need these businesses to roll up and disappear. And the message we're sending to other businesses wanting to move here is like, "I don't think so." I mean, I know Lake City's not the only town going through issues, but if the insanity is not stopped, we're going to end up with the same outcome. I've yet to hear a lot of answers to a lot of questions that's out there, and I know everybody's worried about, "We got to get more money, we got to get more money, got to get more money." Problem is, there's 21 people that's not going to have a job. If they can contact me, I will do everything I can to try to find them a job. I mean, I don't care if it's just something temporary, part-time. I know a lot of people, whether it's at Nanyang, Johnsonville, Florence, King Street, Sumter, point them in my direction, I will try to help them as much as I can. Like I said, I know two minutes goes by way too fast, but I grew up in Johnsonville, but I've learned to love Lake City. There's so much potential here, and I hate to see it squandered. I just would hate to see it get squandered again. So I'm praying for all you guys, just like I told the mayor at Walmart the other day. Y'all read my prayers every night. Thank you.
My name is Emma Cooper, and I live at, my attitude I can't forget. I live at Street 24 Kroger Circle, Lake City, South Carolina, in a co-own apartment. I have one thing to say, and I have one big thank you. Well, I want to say to, to the council and our mayor, y'all touching my heart in more ways than y'all have any idea, because grandma, that's how grandmama are. I thank y'all for who y'all are and what y'all are doing. And one little thing would help so much, like whenever we have those meetings, when y'all come to the meeting that we have, you know, at Senior Citizens, whenever y'all get introduced, if y'all just, when you introduce yourself, if y'all name in your district, just name a street or something, and that would let us know more about the circle that y'all, that y'all in. So, and I want to thank the police department. Oh, the police gone? I want to thank the police department so much. Lieutenant Scott and his officer was at, was at the center one day, and Lord, they brought us home the best news, and before they leave, Lieutenant makes sure that all of us who wanted one, wanted a statement, agenda from, from all of the, from all of the council, he made sure that everybody would have one, that everybody can come and know what's going on. So when we come, we don't have to hear what the streets say, we can come and get it ourselves, because y'all know me, I like mine straight from, straight from the point. I don't like the streets say so much. So we thank y'all for what y'all are doing, and we thank Lieutenant and the officer that came and gave us that good, that good message. And we got, we got all of your, all of your names, all the councilman's names, we got all, how to get in touch with the council, we got all of that. And we want to, we want to thank our lieutenant and the officer, we want to thank y'all so much. Y'all know grandmama, them grandmama love to talk. My time is almost up, so my time is gone, but we still thank y'all.
Let me write my name down first before y'all start, start the clock. I'm not going to be long. My name is Erin Graham, and this is my wife, Lady Graham. We live Bailey Gardens back here for like 19, 20 years, and I just wanted to say, I'm going to, I think 15, 20 years ago, I used to attend these meetings, and I stopped, I don't know why I did, but I just want to congratulate two policemen that were, and they know who they are, that were at Senior Citizens last week, and they are responsible for me and my wife being here, and we, the issues that you talked about, because we're part of Lake City too, and we want to know, and you know, we're going to be here and to hear all your concerns, and I just want you to know that I'm here, I don't have a lot to say, because of those two policemen at Senior Citizens, that's why we're here. And if lost their life, we're going to continue to come to hear, you know, things. Thank you.
Mary Ann Graham, I have two concerns. I'm worried about people, and these water bills going up and these sewer bills. Is there going to be a answer to that? That's what I would like to know, because we have people that's on fixed income, they're worried about water. I mean, and it's bad that you can't get a bath because you worried about water bill. I think something need to be done if the city is being brought out. I think these water bills need to be brought down. Thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon, or however you want to call it. My name is Larry Williamson. I was up here last time. You said you would never forget me, I'm going to remind you again. Go back to the water bill. If I'm mistaken, we owe, what, $3 million? Let me explain it to you in simple English. If you take every house, every business, every restaurant, Nanyang, even the cat houses ain't worth $4 million. If you was to sell Lake City, you couldn't do it. It ain't no way. Our great-grandkids couldn't pay for this. I don't know what's taking... When I go out of town, they say, "Where you from?" I says, "Lake City, Florida." I'm not going to tell them, "Lake City, South Carolina." They go, "You know, this, this town here has got a reputation. The only revenue that really makes money is the drugs, and it's full of it in Lake City." When I was delivering propane in Timersville, every lid I popped up on a propane tank was nothing but drugs. I mean, it's serious, that's how bad it is. People trying to sell drugs to make money, that's the only place you can make money, because a lot of people around here is losing their jobs, you know? But $4 million, it ain't no way in God's creation you can pay that back. In our lifetime, our great-grandkids, their grandkids and great-grandkids, there's no way. Y'all going to have to come up with another solution. If you got to rob a bank, that's the only way you can do it. Or tell Dollar Moore, "We love you, maybe you, she'll pay it," but I don't think that's going to happen either. Just like I said, if I had a dog, I had to put him on a road with a beanbag or something, because I can't afford to pay him and my food and whatever. But it's something to think about. I'm not being funny, it's the truth. You know it. You know it. The only thing you can do... came and give us that good, that good message. And we got, we got all of your, all of your names, all the councilman names, we got all, how to get in touch with the council, we got all of that. And we want to, we want to thank our lieutenant and the officer. We want to thank y'all so much. Y'all know grandma, them grandmama love to talk. But my time is almost up, so my time is gone, but we still thank y'all.
Let me write my name down first before y'all start, start the clock. I'm not going to be long. My name is Aaron Graham, and this is my wife, Lady Graham. We live Bailey Gardens back here for like 19, 20 years. And I just wanted to say, I'm gonna, I think 15, 20 years ago, I used to attend these meetings, and I stopped, I don't know why I did, but I just want to congratulate two policemen that were, and they know who they are, that were at Senior Citizens last week. And they are responsible for me and my wife being here. And we, the issues that you talked about, because we're part of Lake City too, and we want to know. And, you know, we're going to be here and to hear all your concerns. And I just want you to know that I'm here, I don't have a lot to say, because of those two policemen at Senior Citizens, that's why we're here. And if lost their life, we're going to continue to come to hear, you know, things. Thank you.
Mary Ann Graham, I have two concerns. I'm worried about people and these water bills going up and these sewer bills. Is there going to be a answer to that? That's what I would like to know. Because we have people that's on fixed income. They're worried about water. I mean, and it's bad that you can't get a bath because you worried about water bill. I think something need to be done if the city is being brought out. I think these water bills need to be brought down. Thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon, however you want to call it. My name is Larry Williamson. I was up here last time. You said you would never forget me. I'm going to remind you again. Go back to the water bill. If I'm mistaken, we owe, what, $3 million? Let me explain it to you in simple English. If you take every house, every business, every restaurant, Nanyal, even the cat houses ain't worth $4 million. If you was to sell Lake City, you couldn't do it. It ain't no way. Our great-grandkids couldn't pay for this. I don't know what's taking, when I go out of town, they say, where you from? I says, Lake City, Florida. I'm not going to tell them Lake City, South Carolina. You know, this, this town here has got a reputation. The only revenue really makes money is the drugs, and it's full of it in Lake City. When I was delivering propane in Timersville, every lid I popped up on a propane tank was nothing but drugs. I mean, it's serious. That's how bad it is. People trying to sell drugs to make money, that's the only place you can make money, because a lot of people around here is losing their jobs, you know? But $4 million? It ain't no way in God's creation you can pay that back. In our lifetime, our great-grandkids, their grandkids and great-grandkids, there's no way. Y'all going to have to come up with another solution. If you got to rob a bank, that's the only way you can do it. Or tell Dollar Moore, we love you, maybe she'll pay it. But I don't think that's going to happen either. Just like I said, if I had a dog, I had to put him on a road with a beanbag or something, because I can't afford to pay him and my food and whatever. But it's something to think about. I'm not being funny, it's the truth. You know it. You know it. The only thing you can do now is go home and take a drink, right? But think about it, it's the truth. That's it. Merry Christmas. I'll be back.
We're going to take one more comment tonight.
Good evening, everybody. How everybody doing? I'm going to say, my name is Karla Cooper. I thank everybody for what they're doing, what we can do better, cut the bickering, and that's to get the job done. All we can do. If you're bickering too much, just go ahead. You know we got an issue, take care of it. Now, my issue's over there on two or something off the lot drive. I got ditches over there, and I can't afford alignment, I can't afford the water bill neither, but I got the pay though. But what I'm saying is, councilman, I need to get you over there off the lot state, you know? Mayor, y'all, I'm not going to come down here and say all kind of crazy stuff. I'm going to say, look here. Let's work together. Start the bickering and let's get the job done. The people lay it off, you know, I'm just a vet too myself, and getting income every month. But families need y'all help. Y'all people need y'all help. Y'all employees. So do the best you can do. You're going to lose something, but do the best you can do and quit the bickering. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, everyone, for their comments tonight. We're going to move forth with our agenda. And next on our agenda is the legislative portion. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading of an ordinance for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, to levy taxes and establish a municipal budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and all other matters related there, too. This is the second reading of the amended budget. And as you recall, we passed a budget for 2026 in July. So this is really amending the earlier budget based on better information. We knew our information was questionable and inaccurate, so we're revising that. I'm going to, I have a few slides. I'm not going to go through the entire budget presentation again, I'm not sure.
Before you start your discussion with that, I'm going to go ahead and get-
Oh, please do.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the amended ordinance 2025.003 for second reading? It has been properly moved in second. Now we can go to discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll have questions after.
Thank you. The, so the, now, there's a lot to a budget. In this case, we knew we had a difficult budget coming forward. And really, I can tell you, the only regret I have at this point was, we should have been at this point three months ago. If we had started changing the organization, raising rates and all that, as difficult as that is, three months ago, we'd be in better shape than we are today. So, so I know that is a difficult spot for everybody to be in. I don't like to raise rates. I don't like to downsize the workforce. But we really have to do both of those. We're both decreasing the size of the workforce and increasing rates to keep the city stable. The city has great services, police is one, recreation's one, certainly all the services of the city are good, and they are funded at the very minimal level. We've gone through everything in this city to see what we can decrease. And this is the result. This is where we are today. So it's a, the budget before you is a balanced budget. These problems were expensive, and they've gone on for months or probably years in most cases, and they're going to be expensive to fix. Yes, we have to raise rates. Yes, we have to reduce expenses. And the two go hand in hand. I didn't hear anyone saying, let's raise rates and increase the number of employees, or the other way around. No, you really have to do both. We have to cut our expenses and raise rates. These are small, small lettering, but essentially the budget in front of you reduces the workforce by 21 positions. That's a lot. But it was necessary. These positions, the city council had foresight six months, a year ago, when they froze hiring. And when you froze hiring, it allows us not to lay off a lot of people. Out of those 21 positions, I believe only two are staffed. So that's good news. The rest of them were empty positions. Now, that means police has unfilled positions, fire has unfilled positions, all of that. But we're in a better place because those positions were empty. The, the utility system has to be balanced. The revenues have to offset the expenses. There is no way around it. A revenue system, a utility system's a revenue system, it's an enterprise zone, enterprise service. And so the revenues have to balance out against expenses. And the, and if you don't, then you don't have an operational system. We have a short-term problem, which we believe we can correct by adjusting rates, changing the workforce and all that. But the city can't just borrow funds. The city can't go into Bank of America or, or any of the local banks and just borrow money. That's not the way governmental affairs work. We have to go through a more cumbersome process, but it protects you. So we have to borrow bonds, sell bonds. We have to borrow money from institutional agencies and all that. And it protects all of us from the problems that just easy borrowing gets. So, so from the city standpoint, we can't just borrow money. In this case, we're going to issue $1 million in debt. We started off looking at, can we get by with $600,000, but we finally concluded, no, we really do need at least a million, so let's stop at that. Let's stop at a million. That doesn't mean that's going to cure all the problems, but it gives us a chance to look at around and see what else is necessary. When we issue a million dollars in debt, there are really a couple of different ways we'll do so. We need a short-term bond because we're out of money. We barely can make payroll. If you read the newspapers, you saw the discussions about bankruptcy and all that, we believe we can manage our way through that. So without going through the bankruptcy side. But that's going to take short-term money. Short-term money is a tax anticipation note. When you, when we've got taxes coming in in January, we can issue a bond against that. So we'll say, when we, when we get our taxes in, we'll pay it back. So that's a tax anticipation note. That's a short-term borrowing instrument, but it is one that we'll use. The other piece is a general obligation bond. General obligation is what you really think of as municipal debt or governmental debt. A GO bond, we would use that to pay back the tan, pay back the tax anticipation note. So if the tax anticipation note is $600,000, which is kind of what we're shooting for, then we would pay that back, and then we'd do the entire GO bond for a million. So you have $400,000 left to, again, pay off some of the expenses and keep things moving forward. In our case, debt is only possible with an intermediary. We don't have the credit rating that will allow the city to go to market and sell bonds and to move forward. Instead, Lawrence County is helping us out. They will back the bonds, they'll buy the city debt, and we can make all of this work. It's not a, not a simple deal, but it's a good deal. The, there's so many issues here. A GO bond is, I'm drawing a blank, anyway. But there's a, we expect to spend about $210,000 for both debt service and interest. That is built into this budget, so it is built in as a payment for the next five years. Our deal with the county is, it's a five-year loan with 5% interest and annual payments starting March 15th of next year. It's, it's a, it's a good deal for us. It's, I hope it's a good deal for the county as well. But it's a negotiated deal, and so it worked out just fine. I'm going to go through these pretty quickly, so if you have questions, let me know. Otherwise, we've got a total general fund budget of about $10 million. We will expect to transfer about $477,000. That's the money that goes towards paying debt and the other parts of, parts of this deal. Utilities revenues, water and sewer, about $6.6 million. That maintains the lines, it maintains the billing, it maintains the employees that go out and service the lines and billing. It's all of that. With this package, you are maintaining financial stability. We're getting back to financial stability where we have not been for the past several months. We've reduced employees by a total of 21. It's from all the departments across the city. So with that, I mean, we've got, I've got hours' worth of discussion we can have, and you've heard a lot of it if you've been at these meetings. But if I can answer any questions for council, please let me know.
I do, I would like for, thank you, Mr. Thompson, for your, for your presentation. I would like for Ms. Werner, if she can, at this time, explain, because I know a lot of people have questions about the water rate or the water bill increasing. If she can give an example of how that may look for a household.
So-
You may need, you may need, do you have a mic?
So the calculation-
That is going out is based off of 5,000 gallon usage, okay? When we brought the Rural Water Association in to do an analysis on the water and found out that Lake City had one of the lowest rates, especially compared to Bishopville, instead of changing the actual number, because you pay $3.75 per gallon after 2,500 gallons of your water currently. What we did is we restructured it and say, you have to pay for every 1,000 gallons you use. Doing that on a, on a $5,000, $5,000 gallon scale, you were used to paying about $21 for 5,000 gallon uses just on your water. Now with the restructure, that would change to about $31. So that's a $10 increase if you're using 5,000 gallons of water. The same with your sewer. I don't know the exact number like I know the water, but it's about an $18 increase if you use 5,000 gallons worth of sewer. So it, this depends on how you use your water will determine how much you actually pay. For instance, if you only use 1,000 gallons, you're going to pay $1,249, which is your facility fee, plus $3.75, which is per gallon. So you're looking at about a $15 bill compared to now. I hope that is.
We don't take questions from the audience.
I, say again. Say again. Okay. Yes, I do see Ms. Izard here, if she would like to add anything to that. Ms. Nakisha Izard is Department Head and Supervisor of the Water Department. Ms. Izard.
We do have a lot of programs in place for the water bills. We have coins of care program that we offer that a lot of customers do not know anything about. That you can use once a year. Also, if you do experience a high bill, please contact the Water Department as soon as possible. Because what I do is, I stop your lead charges until we can investigate to see what's going on with your bill. I also do payment, payment plans where I can set you up on a payment plan until you get caught up on your bill. So anytime you experience a high bill, please contact the Water Department as soon as possible, so we can stop any lead charges and up to disconnection.
Thank you. Thank you. That's pretty much what she stated is what Mayor Protan wanted me to state as well. If y'all have a high, a high bill, when you get your bill at the beginning of the month, please don't hesitate, or don't wait till the day before or the day of, when it's time to pay the bill, or the day of cutoff, to come down to the City of Lake City and ask questions. We will actually sit down with you, we will look through your bill, we will have our, our crew to go out to check to see if there's something on our side, or there's something on your side. We will, you know, advise you to get a plumber to look into something if it's on your side. And then when a plumber comes out and do any type of work or service, you can bring that receipt back, and you can, and we can do an adjustment to your bill. We are definitely here to help you. We are not here to hurt you. I know there's been a lot of talk of the water bill, the water rates going up, and yes, it was stated before that we are one of the lowest in the state, and we don't need to be here. We don't need to be at the state. It should have been happening for years before now, gradually increasing. And so it has to start somewhere. But like I said, we are here to help you. We are not here to hurt you. And we do have programs in place to help you with your bill. You can definitely do payment plans. So please know that the City of Lake City is here to help you with anything, with your water bill or any other concerns that you may have. Any other questions or concerns about the water or the budget?
Dr. Thompson, during your presentation, just for the audience's sake, when you mentioned enterprise services, can you inform the audience as to what, define that for them, so they would get a clearer picture, if you don't mind, please?
Enterprise funds and that type of thing?
Yes, yes.
I mean, it can be anything. And you'll see this in a lot of cities. If you've got an amphitheater or entertainment venues, those typically are enterprise funds, because the money they generate goes back to offset the city's taxes, just like water and sewer. Water and sewer is also a business for the city to hopefully keep taxes low. So the taxes are low. In this case, we're having to go up on water and sewer rates, because they haven't been adjusted in quite a while. But, but ultimately, all those work together. You have enterprise funds, and then you have basically your tax funds. And we're trying to keep the taxes from going up, but there is an expense there to make all of this work. Is that what you were thinking about?
To get a clear picture?
Ms. Crosby?
Or what that mean?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? I would like to state about, you know, this budget, we have been working on this budget, amending this budget and working on this budget, so we can get on a better path for the City of Lake City. And it's, it's, it's been a lot of different things and changes happening in this budget. And of course, one of the ones are cuts of employees or positions. There are two positions that I definitely want to, for council, to think about tonight, because I think they're very, very imperative for us to keep in this budget. And the two positions is the Human Resources Department, which, I mean, even the Municipal Association states that it's a necessity to have a HR department. HR department does a lot of things. It deals with payroll, it is with medical insurance for our employees, it deals with any other insurance claims that, that goes on with not just employees, but for our citizens as well. It's very, and also, if any potential lawsuits, our HR department deals with things as such. And I just can't see us taking out or deleting a HR department out of our budget, because it's very necessarily imperative to have, as well as the administrative assistant position as well. With the new city administrator coming in, that person is going to really need all the help and assistance that they need. The city clerk, the city clerk position reports to the mayor and council, and works for the mayor and council. And so that city administrator needs the administrative assistant to help them with the day-to-day operations or any, any type of assistance that they need. So I'm just asking the council to reconsider these two positions in the budget, because for one, we do have a new city administrator coming in, and he's really going to need their, their assistance a lot with HR and administrative assistant, and just the essential of the, for the city to efficiently continue to move and operate for those two positions. So I'm, I'm asking in council to make a motion to amend the amended budget of a second reading, to include these two positions back into the budget.
I feel we do need to cut, but I do see the city-
I feel we do need to cut, but I do see the city, uh, need to continue to have HR in place, uh, for the city. I would like to see it continue, but, um, I know we have to do some cutting, but I would like to see, uh, the position continue if we can work around.
So, uh, can I get a motion from the council to amend the amended budget? Include, to include these two positions back in?
I make a motion to include the two positions in the amended budget.
Do you need a second?
Second.
Do you need a second?
I second it.
Okay. Has it been properly moved as second? All in favor? Can I, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed?
So before you go out is, ordinance, as, as for second reading, uh, it's a motion, uh, there was discussion, and now there was a motion, a second discussion, and so I'm underlying ordinance for second reading.
Okay.
Do we need to, do they need to incorporate the changes we made since first reading?
Which I can summarize if you'd like, or if it's already included, we're good.
It's, it's already.
Okay, good. Okay, very good.
Okay. So we have a motion as second. And can I get, um, all in favor for the amended ordinance 2025.003 for second reading? All in favor, show of hands. All opposed? Thank you.
We didn't get a motion on that to go back to the mission again.
Nope.
That, that was prior to-
His, his-
...the discussion.
His discussion.
Right. So...
Do you recall who made the motion in the second?
I think Ms. Crosby, you made, did you make the motion?
No, nobody made the motion.
Someone made the motion in the second right before he did the discussion. Okay, so she made the motion and he seconded. Yes, yes. No, it's okay.
No, you're right, you're right.
It's okay. This is the time to, to get it right, so.
That's right.
Good? Okay, we can move forward, second ordinance?
Oh, yes, thank you. This next is first reading of an ordinance for the City of Lake City, South Carolina to approve a tax anticipation note, uh, borrowing for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, in the principal amount not exceeding 600,000 in Lake City and all other matters thereto.
Okay. I get a motion to approve ordinance 2025.012 for first reading.
Second.
Has it been properly moved as second? Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is an ordinance 25, 2025.013, an ordinance for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, to provide for the issuance and sale of a not exceeding $1 million general obligation bond, series 2025 of the City of Lake City, South Carolina, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds will be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2025.013?
Move to approve, second.
Has it been properly moved as second? Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you.
City council does have a listing of the bills that are provided this, uh, this month. Excuse me, we've got another resolution. Oh, excuse me, that's right, you're right, we're selling property. A resolution to allow the City of Lake City to sell and/or auction city vehicles, equipment, and other matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2025.045 for final reading?
Move to approve, second.
Has it been properly moved as second? Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
You know, it wouldn't be a regular council meeting if I didn't miss something on the agenda. Uh, this is a final reading of a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, to appoint Malik Whitaker to the position of city administrator and other matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2025.046 for final, for the final reading?
Move to approve, second.
Has it been properly moved as second? Any questions, council? None, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you.
Did you say, at the start date?
Yes, the start date for Mr. Malik Whitaker. Um, unfortunately, he's not here tonight for everyone to meet, but I'm pretty sure that you will get a chance and opportunity to meet Mr. Malik Whitaker. Um, he will be starting on Thursday, October 16th as our new city administrator.
Thank you, mayor. You do have a listing of all the bills that the city is, is paying. If you have any questions of those, we can do so, it's fairly lengthy.
Need a motion to approve September 2025, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, September 2025 bill list, items one through six.
Move to approve, second.
Has it been properly moved as second? Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Uh, Chief Miles. Chief Miles, you're up. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, I think that ends your reports.
It does, thank you, mayor.
All right, um, is there any questions for the calls, the stats that you guys have in front of you? Does everybody have a copy of it? This is all September 2025 statistics for the City of Lake City. Obviously, it's been well publicized that we are currently in the midst of working two active homicide investigations. Those call numbers and those statistics are not included in this, that'll be in next month. Uh, but a progress update on those, those investigations are moving forward. We're working diligently on those and, um, I can't get too much into the details, but we, we hope for a conclusion very soon on, on both of those. In comparison for the calls for this month, for September to August, in August, we ran 2,030 calls for service. This month, we ran 1,475 calls for service. And to put a little bit of context with that, typically this time of year is when you start seeing some of your service calls fall off because of the colder weather coming in, the nights are getting colder and a lot, there's not that many people out and about walking around. It's just one of those things that we typically see. Um, but don't, just don't get it confused with the, the good numbers and where that entire number of 1,475, all that's not necessarily a bad thing. Um, for instance, and I'll, I'll say this again like I did at the last council meeting, our property checks, that is part of our community policing model. That puts a police officer in the community, not checking just one property, but generally that entire community. Uh, that's the idea behind it. They're speaking with people in that community. It gets them off of 52, off of 3.78, and puts them in those communities. That's the idea behind that. So when you look at that number of property checks, 447, don't think that's a bad number, that's a good number in our, in our mind. But what we need to be cautious of is we don't want to see our good numbers, our proactive stuff, and we consider that a proactive number. We don't want to see those start slipping and the criminal offenses start rising. And that's, you know, that's what we tend to see with low visibility of law enforcement and stuff like that. So for traffic stops for the month of September, September, we had 434 traffic stops, 64 burglar alarms, 31 domestic violence calls, 38 follow-ups, 29 suspicious persons, seven traffic accidents, 27 disorderly calls, 23 suspicious vehicles, 10 vandalisms, 23 harassment and threatening, um, 17 warrant service calls, eight assaults, excuse me, 10 larcenies, four shooting incidents, or at least four reports of shooting incidents, uh, six break-ins, 27 trespassing, and 15 animal complaints. And I would urge every council member to keep, keep that sheet that you guys get so you can do your own comparison month to month. Because at the end of every year, we will also do a yearly comparison. And you, you'll be able to see, if you keep them all in a file, you'll be able to compare each, each line to, and kind of see where we're at, what we're doing. Um, they did 163 citations that was issued for the service calls that we, or the traffic stops that they done. So for 434 traffic stops, we only issued 163 citations. And again, we're not ticket driven. Uh, Lake City doesn't, we don't get very much money from the tickets we write. I know that's a misconception across a lot of areas. And I, I don't even think it's, I want to say this number is somewhere around 94% goes to the state of South Carolina. So we get very little of every ticket we write. Of those 163 citations, 58 of them were vehicle license violations. There were 18 simple possessions of marijuana, 10 speeding tickets we issued, five operating uninsured, 13 driver's license violations, 11 driving under suspensions, and two DUIs. And for the 1,475 calls for service, they did 165 incident reports. 31 of those consisted of an arrest on scene. At the time the officer was there, there was 54 warrants issued and 41 arrests warrants served. And that's the breakdown for those. We had 13 juvenile offenses and 152 adult offenses. Any questions on those? I know I went through them kind of fast. That's all we got. And, um, our current numbers, we are at, is it 31, right? Right. Our current numbers, we're at 31 positions total. That's, that's not the positions we have filled. Right now, I think we're, we're two, one, two vacancies, what we're looking in there. In comparison, this time last year, we had 40 police officers on the road. Now we have 28.
48?
Yep.
Okay, you mentioned, um, council members holding on to these, um, sheets. Is it possible to do a spreadsheet with the previous month, current month and the previous statistics?
Yeah, we can work, we can work on how we include that. We have to include some of the data on there too. However, some of this data in here, you have to have a CEGIS stuff. There, there's some training you have to go through to have access to some of this. Um, I don't mind you guys having the numbers, but some of these are active cases with names that's attached to them and stuff like that. Um, we can look at, I'm, and we've been trying to look at a way to, how to include all that together. But I was trying to have it condensed down to one sheet. I just think once we start adding, we're going to have to go to a multi-sheet.
Okay, because the fiscal year begins July 1.
What's that?
The fiscal year begins July 1, um, this is October. So next month-
Yeah, we typically do a year in January.
Okay.
This doesn't necessarily follow a fiscal year, it's kind of a calendar year.
Okay, um, but being, this is October now and the, um, statistics we're looking at now are for September. Um, maybe for October, you can have September's incorporated in there. And if, and if possible, go back to January. So when you're looking at it, you can just do your comparisons right then and there. If, I'm, I'm sure that's doable, but, um, if you were just looking to see-
This entire chart is created within our records management system.
Okay, okay.
Those numbers are put into a formula to where when she does them, it, it creates that pie graph, it creates the charts, and it creates all that. It does that. I don't know whether it's AI or whatever it is.
Okay.
That's what does that. But I'm not the genius behind this, for sure.
Okay, yeah, because I, I think, I'm, I'm sure it can be done, it's just a matter of, um...
We'll work with it and see what we can come up with.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, for your reports. Um, now, next we will have our council member reports and comments and mayor's report, and that will be the end of our meeting. Councilmember Brown, we start with you, please.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, uh, going through the concerns and everything. Uh, I want to keep everyone in, going through, um, difficult times with losing a loved one, um, keep you in my prayers and in my thoughts. I know we have seven families in the City of Lake City grieving. And, uh, just know that you are in my thoughts and prayers. And, um, I'm thanking of you, um, and we try to get the city on the right track and move forward. That's all I got to say.
Thank you all for coming out to voice your concerns. Um, just like Councilmember Brown stated, uh, we have a lot of bereavement families right now, so continue to keep them in your prayers and hope to see you all next month.
Thank you all for coming. Um, the service I attended this past, um, Saturday, the eulogist entitled that service, "When Will It Stop?" When will it stop? The "it" is the gun violence. We know we have some serious issues here in Lake City. People are looking at us, more people are looking at us than we realize. And it has gotten to a point now, I'm hoping it will, will get better, but it's gotten to a point now where people are so afraid to be in their homes alone. And that is very understandable. And we, as a community, as once someone stood up and said earlier, we as a community need to come up with some solutions. It was suggested maybe getting some groups together, great idea, would love to be a part of it. But we need to work together and be proactive in cutting down this kind of violence. And if it continues, we're trying to get Lake City back on track again, as was stated earlier. I hate to ditto everything, but businesses are not going to come here. They're not going to come because when they look at the stuff that's going on in small town Lake City, that's going to deter a lot of businesses. And if that's the case, we're not going to be able to broaden our tax base. So, we as council need your help also. And thank you all for coming. And if any of you can have any viable solutions or suggestions or recommendations, more than willing to entertain them. Because we're losing it, have lost it, and it's continuing. Pray it doesn't, but it's, it's, it's sad. It's sad to see it just. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming out. First, I would like to say that it's taken a long time to actually get this budget together. Um, however, I want you all to know that, um, and I'm sure that everyone on council can say that nothing about what we are doing is easy because it can happen to any of us on our jobs any day. However, because the city is a business, we have to do what it takes to try to continue to help it operate. So with that, just because you hear of, uh, the apartment being eliminated, don't think that the employees won't have access to different things because they will. Um, and these, just because things are eliminated right now, that doesn't mean that it's a final decision because again, the city is a business. Every year, the city makes a budget. And so whenever the time comes where the city has more money and is generating more revenue, I am sure that these positions will be able to open again and people can come back and work for the City of Lake City. That's, that's my hope. Um, it's just right now, because of things that has happened, we have to make these hard decisions. And like I said again, it's nothing that any of us want to do, but we are put in this position to make the hard decisions so that we can better Lake City and keep your city, our city, operating. As far as the gun violence, it's sad. It needs to stop. I heard someone said that the kids are our future. Someone was 15 years old and got killed yesterday. This person would not even get to graduate high school. It's done. It is over for them, just because of some nonsense. I'm sure it was some nonsense, something that wasn't even serious at all. I just hope and pray that one day, we can all come together and make a, come together, build an ordinance for something for our city so that the gun violence can stop. Even if it gets to the point where we have to start holding parents accountable, just like how we do with this curfew, we just have to do what we have to do, because we do not need to continue to lose our kids. It's not old people getting killed, it's young people who didn't even have a chance at life. And for the ones, and for the young kids that are watching now, please don't take anything for granted, because you could be here today and gone tomorrow. You could just be in the wrong place at the wrong time, and it can be over. My mom always said, "Choose your friends wisely. Watch who you hang around." Halloween is coming up. Again, as I always say, stay vigilant and stay safe, y'all. Have a good night, and I hope to see you guys in November.
I can also echo what was said already about crime and the violence. It's all right to disagree, but yet we can still be friends. I don't agree on what some decision that was made, but I know and I'm willing to work on. I felt the need in a different aspect of some, but we must go on. I know the city have to go on. But I say, all right to disagree, but we can disagree and smile right on without a fight. So I thank you all tonight for that, for us being together and let us know we can disagree, but we can smile and still move on. So looking forward to seeing you all next week, and have a safe holiday, which is Halloween. We used to have a big treat, so anyhow, enjoy the rest of the month. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and as most everyone has said, I'd also like to extend my condolences to the families of the people who have recently lost their lives, the boy that was killed yesterday, as well as Nick Jenkins, who was killed two weeks ago. I'd also like to reiterate what I said at our last meeting, that this budget isn't a budget that any of us like, none of us want to cut positions, and no one wants to raise the water and sewer rates, but these are the necessary steps that we have to take in order to get the city back on track and out of debt. And I do have high hopes, the city is going to get back on track because we've made these difficult steps, so, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you, council members, for your reports. Thank everyone for coming tonight. I thank everyone for viewing on social media as well. Please stay encouraged and come into the meetings, not only when we're going through tough times, but just to come and listen and to voice. What I see tonight, I see love. I'm looking at the audience, I'm looking at us. Yes, we're making the tough decisions. We've been in somewhat of battles back and forth about whatever decisions we need to make, but remember, love conquers all. And this city, like someone stated earlier, that when we look at everyone in here, that shows that we have a lot of people that care about the city of Lake City. I love the city of Lake City. I would not have run for mayor if I did not love my hometown and wanted to do something to make it a better town, and we all up here wants to do that. I appreciate all the employees for everything that you do on a daily basis. It's not easy out there, but our employees are amazing people. They work hard for each and every one of you, every day. They come in, they clock in, they work, they do what they're supposed to do at their very best, because that's all they're required to do at their very best, and I appreciate each and every one of them. I do give my condolences to all the bereaved families, especially to all of this senseless acts that are happening out here with gun violence and our young people. We have to come together to save our young people. It's not left to just us, the leadership, or the leaders of the city. We're all leaders in the city. So we all have to come together and bring our ideas and bring our visions and goals of what we want to see our city look like for our young people, for more things, like Ms. Jones said, for more things for our young people to get in, more positive things for our young people to be a part of, more opportunities for them. Let's collaborate, let's partner, let's come together to see that happen for our young people, so they won't turn to violence. Mr. Roosevelt Bryant, he's not here tonight, but he is having another community walk, and it has been shared on social media and flyers out and about for "Stop the Violence." And what we chant when we're walking, we chant, "We love you, we care, stop the violence. We love you, we care, stop the violence." And they need to know that they are loved and that they are cared for and that we support them, but we got to do more than say it. We got to show it. We got to put it in action. We also having a prayer for the city that is being facilitated by Pastor Joshua Howard this Friday in the parking lot, Rosa's parking lot, where we usually line up for parades, major parades. Please, any and everybody, come out. Let's gather together. Let's come together and pray for our city, pray for our young people, because what we need most of all, in the midst of all of this, is God. We need God. He is the miracle worker. He will change every single thing around. And from this day on, from this day point after passing this budget, what we're going to do as council members, I love each and every one of you. We might have our differences, and that's okay, because that's what a family does, but we're going to pick up the pieces and we're going to move forward for our city. We're going to move forward for the city of Lake City. I thank everyone who has called me, text me, messaged me. There have been young people, there's a young lady now in high school that I got to go home and talk to, because she wants to talk to me about doing something for our city. We have young people that have been calling me. I have other people that have been reaching out that wants to do something for our, all the employees and the employees that have lost their positions. There are great people in this city that looks out for each other, and I say, "Thank you, let's continue that." We do see a lot of the negative stuff, especially on social media, but we have a great city, and we have great people within that city. Let's keep that going. Let's keep it going. I'm going to ask everyone to please continue to be patient with us, to be patient with us, as we restructure, because as we don't have certain departments and certain people in positions, we're going to have to restructure things. There are going to be more responsibilities on other people to make sure that we continue to run this city efficiently. So I'm asking the citizens to be patient with us. If you don't get an answer, first thing when you call the first time at the city of Lake City, or anything, I'm asking you to please be patient with us as we restructure for this new budget that was just passed tonight. I know there was a lot that went on this past weekend or past week, couple of weeks, with the sanitation, with the commercial dumpsters not getting picked up. We have been not sitting on our hands on that. We have been on the phone, off and on. Our trucks have been down, but we have been working diligently to make sure that those dumpsters are dumped. I do want to thank Mr. Michael Singletary for all that he and his crew, sanitation. If you see them out there, please thank them, because they went over and beyond, especially Mr. Michael Singletary, for going out there to make sure that those dumpsters get cleaned. Might it didn't happen as fast and quick as you needed to or wanted to, and we do apologize, but things do happen, and we're getting, worked on, our trucks getting worked on right now. But we had to go out, and we actually had to rent one until these trucks get fixed. But we're doing everything possible that we can to make sure that you are served correctly in the right way. Please don't ever think that we're sitting on our hands. So if you see them out there, please just tell them thank you. That means a lot. It means a lot. And like I stated before, love conquers all. I love each and every one of you. If you ever have any issue or concern, please come to me. Come to us. We're only one person. We're not Superwoman or Superman, but we're going to do everything possible that we can. Our oath stated that we will do it to the best of our ability. We can't do no more than that. But we can do a whole lot more together. We can do a lot more together. So I appreciate everyone. Please, let's continue to pray. Come out, let's pray for our city on Friday. Continue to pray in your homes. I pray for the Jenkins family, who is my family as well. Nick was a nephew by marriage for me, and it was hard, very hard, to see a mother, a father, uncle, losing a child. We don't need any more of that in the city of Lake City. So I'm asking everyone to please come together for our young people. When you see them having things, support them. Come out to the games. You don't have to have a nephew or a niece or anybody that's playing. Come out to the game so they can see your faces. There's so much more I can say, I'm sorry, but I love this city. I love this city. We all do, as you can tell in here tonight. So let's show it from this point on. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All in favor?